All right, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you for your patience. It is 9:03 a.m. Today is Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. This is the regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We will begin this with a moment of silence. Do any of our supervisors have one? And we have Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Pyska.
So I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to the families of our two residents who lost their lives to COVID-19 this week, and the families who are struggling with their loved ones who are out of the county and in ICUs and all over the region.
I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence to all the families that lost family members in Afghanistan, considering what's just taken place. And I just wanted to have them in our thoughts.
Do we have anything on at the board today? Okay.
Supervisor Simon, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to item number four. Are there any extra items that are not currently on the agenda that supervisors would like to add? And nothing from staff as well? Okay, moving forward, approval of the consent agenda. Any items from the consent agenda that supervisors wish to pull for further discussion? And anything from staff from the consent agenda that you wish to pull? I don't believe I received any email. Let's open it up to the public. Any items from the consent agenda that you wish to pull for further discussion? And if you are in the Zoom room, please raise your hand, and we will call on you by pressing the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you are calling via telephone, dial *9. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, items number 5.1 through 5.18.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Spatina.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item 6.1 or 9:05 a.m. item, public input. If you have any expression on anything that is not on our agenda today, then you have three minutes. And if you want to step up to the microphone in the boardroom or raise your hand if you are in the Zoom room, we'll go ahead and start in the boardroom today. And again, you have three minutes, and please give us your name.
Good morning. My name is Seba Jamali, and I know you've seen me before, but I am coming with a scenario for you with some facts that we actually have gotten from our political guys, so we know it's legal. It's not something we just come up with. They researched it. I don't know how to say that, so I'm sorry. I probably didn't say it right. But as you know, we are bargaining with you guys for a contract. And the amount of money that we were asking for, the county share is going to be $475,740. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. And granted, I know we are the poorest county in the state of California. That's hands down. But here's the thing. We have over 1,800, maybe 2,000 now, providers. And imagine if all of us were given a dollar more an hour in our wages to use in Lake County. That is a profit that we can't afford to keep losing. It is a true, and it's going to happen. I don't have time to go out of county to pay my, you know, buy my groceries and, you know, go to Yucaya and go to Costco. I buy all my groceries here, in Lake County. If it's not at Safeway, I buy it at Walmart's. If it's not at Walmart's, I go to IGA. So I'm spending all that money that I'm getting on my contract and from my wages here. So it stands to reason to me that if 2,000 providers were given a livable wage and we were allowed to use it where we would, which would be here, we could help our own county come out of being the poorest county. Now, there's something else that I wanted to mention this morning. When we go to work every day, we go by hours and how many hours we get paid. That's how our salary comes out. But what you guys don't know is that each day we go to work, we stand a chance of not having a job. Why? Our client goes into the hospital. Our client goes into retirement home. My son passed away on June 24th. 56 hours of my income. While it's a bad thing to mention money when I'm mentioning a true loved one that I lost, but he's only 44, and I lost him. 56 hours of my income is gone. That's a big chunk. If I was getting a livable wage, I wouldn't have to worry about it. So I have to go out and get more hours to replace that. And that's why you have providers who mention they have more than one client, because one client sometimes isn't enough hours for us to survive. So I'm just hoping that when you hear the numbers, that you don't think about the large number that you're spending, but that you will think about the large number that you will be receiving in our economy. And I think my three minutes is probably up.
Good ears.
But thank you for listening. And just, I just, I know you guys are tired hearing enough from me, so let's get that contract done.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments from the boardroom? Please come up to the microphone.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Fred Domingo, and I represent my clients of 14320 Noble Ranch Road. This might not be in some of your districts, but what's going on in Lower Lake County, or excuse me, Lake County right now is very, very serious. What happened was the supervisors passed an ordinance in 2018 that if you have 20 acres, you could have commercial cultivation. Just so happens in the same exact year that Richard Ford went ahead and used a GIS program from the county, which cannot be used for acreage, yet he did. And he used it because he just needed some internal data that he said he did not have for a lot of your parcels in the county, 65,000 parcels. He said there was roughly 15,000 parcels that had data, but they wanted to populate just for their own idea what the valuation would be of this land. When they did a GIS overlay of your entire county, that's great to get you a rough idea, but what he did then was he took all those, what we call Mickey Mouse numbers, because you cannot have GIS numbers looked at in any serious fashion whatsoever. It might be an approximation, but it is by no means supposed to be used to determine somebody's acreage. And when I say this, I mean it's off by a couple acres here and there. Some people actually gained two acres, two and a half acres of land. My horse barn's on your property line. I just gained two acres, or you gained it. What happens to my horse barn? You're going to cause so many problems by this GIS overlay, which moves your parcel lines and moves your boundaries. And what's happened with this is that you guys passed a law about 20 acres. So when we show up to the counter at the planning department, it says 19.6 or 19.1, oh, we get denied. Except for 20 years since we bought the property, we paid on 20 acres. And it's been 20 acres on record inside the tax assessor's data, which, by the way, somebody in this county, thank God, sent me a screenshot showing me the proof of 20. I said, that's funny, because when you go to 19, it shows 19.16 now. I said, I don't remember a sinkhole or an earthquake taking land away up here. So how is it possible that we lost land? Well, you didn't really lose it. What Richard did was he took the data that was good data, and he got rid of it. He erased it. And he overwritten it with this magical imaginary number, which we call Mickey Mouse number, which is GIS. We've had lawyers look into it. You cannot, in your website, you cannot use GIS for acres, yet somehow Richard is saying, well, this is just an approximation. Go get a survey or a lot line adjustment, and we'll change that number back. Well, Richard did not use a survey to change the number in the first place. He just did a GIS and changed the numbers. These numbers have existed when we bought the property, 20 acres. What we're asking for now is to go back in time just to 2018 for the past 10 years that we've all paid on 20 acres as well, taxes. The valuation for the State Board of Equalization, California, has stood to me. You ask the county this. How much money is the county going to make if they grant them the 20 acres, which they've already had, so they could get commercial cultivation? It's not that they want to do the cultivation themselves.
And your three minutes are up if you can get to your final point.
We'd like to sell the property, and it would sell for an extra $700,000 versus what we could sell for without the license. That $700,000 difference is a big difference to the county, which equates to at least two sheriff's cars in 10 years. And if there's 20 of us, that's $1.6 million to, I guess, the poorest county in the state.
And again, your three minutes are up if you could just do your final statement.
The final statement is what we're doing is we're going to propose to the county to please look at this seriously enough that our situation shows we've had 20 acres. We'd like to not get what's called a variance, but an exception, exemption, whatever you want to call it, based on the facts that this land has had 20. And knowing what Richard did.
Sorry, your three minutes are up.
We look forward to talking to you more in the future and bringing this to a light and resolving this for the county so you could have true economic development as well as missing the future problems that will come by this. Thank you, guys. We'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments in the boardroom before we move on to the Zoom room?
Good morning, all. Again, my name is Luisa Acosta, and I just want to let you know that we're not here to cause any issues among the county, among anybody. We are here to be visible. We have done some research, and we have done the research, and we know the math. We are asking the board members to do the right thing. This is something that you have the power to change. And when you invest in your community, we all win. And you will know that this is a fact. I'm asking you to put your right hand in your heart when the time comes to decide what you're going to give our workers. Keep in mind that today is them, and tomorrow will be somebody else, maybe a grandchild, one of your own kid, taking care of you. So please consider that and think about it. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments in the boardroom?
My name's Diana Willard, and I am a provider in Lake County. And just the same thing, just asking you guys to do the right thing. Jessica, actually, you came to one of our meetings, and, you know, I felt like you felt us, heard us, understood what we were saying. So just taking that same consideration, maybe remembering some of the things that we shared with you that night, just to do the right thing and support this. Let's be a county that takes care of their disabled, their sick, their elderly. And thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments in the boardroom? Please state your name and your three minutes.
My name is Fernando Royal. I'm with 14320 Noble Ranch Road. And all I'm asking is for you guys to, you know, figure out a way to get our 20 acres back so we can, you know, we can sell it, get off from under it. The family members, my brother had just passed away two months ago, and the family members do want to sell it. And that's what we're asking for, just to get our 20 acres back. And like, Mr. Dean Minko said, if you give us our 20 acres, you guys make money, enough money to where you can fund your police departments, your fire departments, and your caregivers. They can get a raise, because you can make up within 10 years up to over $1 million plus just by saying, yeah, you got your 20 acres. You can do what you got to do with it, and you guys can make money. And that's all we're asking for. We're not asking for anything else. We're just asking, just to give us our 20 acres, like everybody else is asking. And I'm quite sure, there should have been a lot more people here asking for the same thing. But we don't understand what they're afraid of. You know, if they're afraid of something might happen different or something like repercussions of some sort or what. But we had talked to a lot of people, and they said the same things are happening to them. This would help out the county itself by, you know, getting all this extra money. And that's what it sounds to me like the caregivers want and everybody else wants, is just to help out the county. And that would help out a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Last check in the boardroom. Any further comments before we move on to the Zoom room? All right, let's go to the Zoom room. I see phone 4627, if we can please unmute. And please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Tom Slate. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring something up as a disclosure. It's been brought up before, but because of all the COVID and masking hysteria, this, first of all, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not giving medical advice. I don't mean this. I just want to raise this issue and bring it up once again, that there's plenty of information available that according to doctors, I don't know, but it sounds like it to me, that there are treatments and preventative, such as hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin and others. And I just wanted to bring this out because I don't know what is the situation in Lake County, because on the updates, COVID updates I've listened to, I haven't heard anything about that. And it seemed like something that would be extremely important because apparently these treatments are very effective. And so I just want to bring that to your attention to disclose this information one more time. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 1113. And again, please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi. This is Will Tuttle, and this is regarding the COVID response. So we've been witnessing for many weeks the Lake County health officials and the Board of Supervisors conspiring to use propaganda, bribes, and coercion to compel county residents to submit to medical experimentation, which is in direct violation of the Nuremberg Code of Ethics and of the right to fully inform consent. This is all on video. You have been all constantly, consistently refusing to look at the masses of compelling evidence that documents over 500,000 vaccine injuries and deaths now in the United States. The available alternative treatments, like we just heard about, devastating deceit of the official narrative. What's going on? Have you all been bought off? What is your motivation in refusing to protect people from exploitation and tyranny? Let's follow the money, shall we? Last week, Dr. Bloom informed us that he is not taking any money from Pfizer or the other drug companies. However, this is absolutely not true. At a deeper level, it becomes obvious that his entire salary is only coming to him because he is willing to unquestioningly support Big Pharma's narrative. Big Pharma has captured the AMA, the medical school training process, the CDC, and the government. So he's guaranteed to have plenty of esteem and money as long as he goes along. And if he questioned it for one moment, he would be out of a job. The Federation of State Medical Boards now has a policy that any health official who questions the COVID narrative will lose their license. So doctors Pace, Bloom, and Evans, and all the doctors and nurses, everyone is in a pharma-controlled payoff prison of deception that they cannot question or challenge, and they know that. These people typically have few other life skills and would be reduced to working menial jobs if they lost their license. And that's understandably terrifying to them. And the same thing is true of the county supervisors. If you supervisors publicly questioned this narrative, you would be immediately attacked by the media, by the Lake County Record B, and your political future would be destroyed. The same thing is also true of the reporters and the editors of the Record B and all the mainstream media, because the largest advertisers are the wealthy and powerful interests that are supporting the lockdowns, the inoculations, and the destruction of economic and political freedom. And so the media, the government agencies, the medical industry, the local and state politicians, they're all taking money from Big Pharma, either directly or indirectly, and are paid off. In the case of what happened in Nazi Germany, of course, we had the United States Army that kind of rode in on white horses and freed the people, and those who perpetrated the violence and injustice were held to account. Many of them went to jail, and the leaders were killed for their crimes against humanity. Whether this will happen eventually in this case, it's hard to say. But for sure, we all leave our bodies at some point. And at that point, we will be held to account for what we've done in our lifetimes, and if we were egocentric and harmful and cowardly, or if we did our best to be kind to others and to protect the vulnerable. So this is something to be very aware of. If we follow the money, where does it lead in the big picture? Ultimately, we can never escape accountability for our actions. As the Bible says, "God is not mocked; whatever seeds we sow, that shall we also reap." Truth will always triumph in the end. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Jennifer Denham.
Good morning, supervisors. First, I would like to say that I, oh, my God, I hi [spelled phonetically] you for putting up with three minutes of Mr. Tuttle every week. In other words, I'm here representing SEIU 2015, and I wanted to give a different perspective than Seba did. My son has autism and epilepsy. He's 23 years old, and I literally work 24/7. But I only get paid for 283 hours a month, which is the maximum amount of hours allowed. Additional money would make the additional hours that I work worth it. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 6205.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. I want to actually ask a question. I know you can't answer, but it seems that there's no COVID update today. And is there one going to be? Because we're in such an elevated case situation, it seems urgent to keep that happening every week at the Board of Supervisors. Second, IHHS workers. I don't have any association with them, but I am a person who might someday need their services, as are all of us. And I've listened to their presentations to the Board of Supervisors for a couple of months now. And just from a public point of view, I can't understand why what they're asking for is so difficult to grant, because it involves caring for, from my perspective, the entire community. We all share one thing. One day, we will be unwell and die. And we don't know who among us is going to need additional care. And it's this workforce that is trained to do that. And so I want this workforce cared for and supported, healthy and in place in Lake County for all of us as we age and might one day need care ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'll answer the first part of it. It was requested to have a COVID-19 update, and it's my fault. I made a mistake when reviewing the agenda. It was not on there, and I did not recognize that it was not on there, but it will be there next week. Next is phone 6478. And again, please provide your name and three minutes.
Hello?
Hello.
My name is Madeline, and I like to...
Can we get your last name, Madeline?
Dear Lord.
Thank you.
And I like to speak about these very precious comments, how you call them. They're very elaborate and about the COVID, all the different medicines, the hydroxychloroquine and all the other ones. And all about also the money where it goes. Like, it's all about money and power, the whole pandemic. And so I feel like you deny it afterwards and have the last word. And everything which is said, which isn't on your side, will just be denied. And then, when you have the last word, the person who gave the presentation doesn't have an occasion to actually say something. I think this isn't correct, and this has to be changed. So I really ask for this to be changed, that the person who prepares so well to give the comment doesn't have an opportunity to answer to what you're saying. So this is my thanks for this week. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Ahava Rose. Again, make sure that you let us know your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, supervisors. Thanks for having me again. Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you can give us your name.
Hey, good morning. Ahava Rose. Thank you again for getting together. I don't really have all of the health codes and violations of California's government codes in front of me right now, but that's a past thing that we've discussed and will be discussing more in the future. Today, I just wanted to give you the opportunity vocally to consider that you don't have, being that you don't have an official public health officer registered or able to name right now, but that the ones that have appeared, the only ones that have appeared, have mentioned things like lining our public up for experimental poisonous injections and, you know, wearing a cloth on their face that harbors bacteria all day. I'd like you to consider maybe a public health officer that would mandate things like 15 to 20 minutes of breathwork and meditation every day, 15 to 20 minutes of exercise, maintaining a diet of pesticide-free, whole-food, plant-based food, good water. You know, I'm not an allopathic doctor. I'm an Ayurvedic health counselor. My parents are in the allopathy, in the Western medicine. They're a labor and delivery nurse and a registered emergency ER doctor and vascular surgeon. Yeah, my parents are wonderful people, though. And, you know, as most people are in the medical industry. But I chose to go a different way because I saw how, you know, they would come home telling me stories of getting bribes from pharmaceutical representatives. So it's not like this is something unknown to me. And if I were your chief public health officer, what I would do is recommend these things in addition to anyone who wants to stay healthy, having 10,000 units of vitamin C every day, 400 international units of vitamin D. And anyone that was at a serious risk, have a lot of zinc on hand and a stash of ivermectin, which, being the poorest county in the state, costs pennies on the dollar. So I think I really do want to encourage you to look into that personally and look into maybe getting a public health officer who would allow these things in our hospitals and get patients treated with high-dose vitamin C if they were to get sick, and an infusion of that and hydroxychloroquine, which have been shown to get patients out of the hospital in sometimes the very same day. So that's all I have to say. And if you don't do these things, I will be back to put you on notice for violating several codes that breach the peace of our county, having all this hysteria and, you know, coercing, conspiring to coerce people to line up for medical experiments that are linked to myocarditis.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next comment, phone 2689.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Christina, and I'm not a healthcare worker.
What is your last name, Christina?
Christina Robertson.
Thank you.
I advocate for the healthcare workers to receive their living wage that they're asking for. Yes, but my other important message that I want to reiterate from last week, um, and that is to urge you to really look at what is happening with the COVID-19 situation. Um, I promise you, it is a smokescreen for something much, much worse, much more threatening. If I told you that there is a plan in place to move the unvaccinated, if needed, if need be, it's not happening now. But if I told you there's a plan in place to move the unvaccinated to camps called Green Camps, would that sound like conspiracy theory to you? Well, it would have to me before I started seriously investigating and looking at alternative information, not the information that is paid for, not the information that has money behind it and where they tell the journalists and investigators what to investigate and how far they can go with that investigation and what they want you to think is happening. So, yes, it does sound like a conspiracy theory, Green Camps. Look on the CDC website, and in the search bar, type in Green Camps. I'd like to know what you think of this. And that's where the suggestion of a former speaker would come in handy. When we make a comment, what do you have to say about it? Green Camps. Search that on the CDC website. Is this what you want your country to be? Um, we've, we've had citizens placed in camps before, Japanese citizens during World War II. I really believe we're at a crucial point. And yes, I want people to be healthy. It's important, and some of the suggestions made are very helpful. If people would turn to creating health instead of, um, going with the, the mass hysteria, as one person put it.
And your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Uh, I, I will agree with you that if you go to the CDC website, you will find that information. What makes it a conspiracy theory is to believe it will happen. I'm still looking for the FEMA camps that were supposed to happen years ago. Never happened. Uh, it's, the government has a lot of things they research to look into. There's a lot of war games that are played that we don't know about unless we do some research. There's a lot of other things that they research into. It's the idea of what actually gets put into action. Uh, to theorize that things that are researched are automatically going to become reality, that's where it becomes conspiracy. Just want to make sure that people are aware that these, these things are not real. Any further comment from the board chambers? Just to check in again, and then-
Supervisor, if I could just point out something. You know, week after week, we sit here and hear the belittling and the derogatory comments. And I just want to point out, observation that Socrates let us know about, that the debate is lost when slander becomes the tool of the loser.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Scott. We do have a hand, uh, last one, and then we'll go ahead and close public comment. Julia. And if you could please provide your full name. And again, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Julia Bono. Uh, I have a scientific background, and I have researched nutritional healing for over 20 years with particular expertise in the health benefits of raw, plant-based diets. I wish to speak to the board today about their responsibility to promote an important preventative measure for moderate to severe COVID-19 cases that anyone can implement at home. Numerous studies have shown that coronaviruses are notably pH-sensitive, typically being deactivated at higher alkaline pH levels. Alkalizing pH changes can quickly be affected in humans by following a raw, plant-based diet where only uncooked, plant-derived foods are consumed, since cooked and high-protein foods have a notably acidifying effect on the human body. Individuals can also use inexpensive alkalizing agents like sodium bicarbonate, AKA baking soda, administered orally at home or intravenously under medical supervision to change their body's pH levels. Importantly, a recent study entitled "Plant-Based Diets, Pescatarian Diets, and COVID-19 Severity", a population-based case-control study in six countries, showed that those following acidifying, low-carbohydrate, high-protein diets were five and a half times more likely than those following alkalizing, plant-based diets to suffer moderate to severe COVID-19 symptoms. The research concluded that a plant-based dietary pattern may therefore be considered for protection against moderate to severe COVID-19. Thank you, board. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comment. And that will finish up our public comment as I close that upon seeing the hand of Julia. And we will move on to our 9:06 AM item, presentation on SB 1383, Reducing Short-Lived Climate Pollutants in California. And Director Ewing, you are here with us. Good morning.
All right, good morning, board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Uh, appreciate the, the time to give, uh, what I hope to be a brief presentation on, on SB 1383 to, uh, to update the board, inform the board, and, and update the, the board and the public on, on actions that the county is taking. Um, so I do have a presentation, and if your board will indulge me, I'll, I'll share my screen.
Please.
Okay, so SB, SB 1383, uh, was the Senate bill that was passed in, in actually 2016. Um, and, and, uh, it, it is what is shown on the screen here, Reducing Short-Lived Climate Pollutants in California. Um, I'm going to go through a presentation that is, it is modified. I, I modified it for, for the Board of Supervisors. It was provided by CalRecycle, um, to the RRCRC, Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority. Um, the, the modifications are for the specific, um, components of, of the regulations that, that do apply to Lake County. So SB 1383, the intent with 1383 in reducing short-lived climate pollutants as it relates to, um, to the solid waste industry and, and essentially for all the CalRecycle components is, is reducing organic waste from the waste stream. Um, this slide here, um, and I, and I also want to indicate that, that this presentation was provided to the Solid Waste Task Force, the County Solid Waste Task Force. Um, and, and so we're, you know, just making sure that everyone is, is aware. But, but this, this slide here shows, um, you know, what is organic waste? Organic waste i- is more than just food waste, paper products, lumber, um, uh, you know, uh, paper waste. There's, there's a, a whole gamut of, of, uh, components to, to organic. But the intent is to reduce, um, from the waste stream, reduce organics. Uh, another component of 1383 is what is shown on the, on the right side of this screen. Um, and that is eliminating, um, or reducing from the waste stream food that could otherwise have, have been, um, been eaten. So we're, we're looking at, at, uh, you know, providing about 20%. And the next screen shows some of the goals. And I'll, I'll jump ahead. At, at the bottom here, we talk about the 20% recovery of, of, uh, food that is currently edible but disposed, uh, right now. So, so the goals here, um, that 1383 establishes, uh, the regulations, first off, the regulations for 1383 were, were not finalized until the, the end of, of calendar year 2020. Um, within 1383, there was a goal to reduce by 50% the amount of, of organic waste that is landfillled. Um, so the, the regulations came into effect at the end of 2020, and we were already to the point where we were supposed to have been statewide reducing by 50% the, the amount of, of waste going into the waste stream. Um, next year, the regulations go into, into effect. Uh, and then come 2025, uh, there's, there's another goal of, of a 75% reduction in landfillled organic waste. I think it's important to note here that the, the, uh, the percentages that we're talking about here is, uh, is established based on a 2014 baseline. So, so what were the figures in 2014? We need to be at 50% or needed to be at 50% and, and then ultimately 75% in 2025. Uh, and then also that 20% recovery of, of currently disposed edible food is, goes into effect in, in 2025. Now, the impact to, to the local jurisdictions, to the county and, and the cities, which is, which is really why we're here, it, it, they're significant. Um, and, and going through some of them here, the, you know, these slides that CalRecycle prepared, um, on the, you know, starting from, from left to right, we see, uh, organic waste, uh, collection, organic services to, to residents and businesses. Uh, the next up is the establishment of an edible food recovery program, education and outreach to the community, purchasing recyclable and recovered organic products, secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, and then monitoring for that. Now, uh, in, in as much as a lot of this is, is very onerous, the, the state recognized that, um, there are substantial challenges for implementing, uh, specifically the organics collection and expanding recycling facilities in rural areas. Uh, and so with, with that in mind, there are waivers that, uh, that we have the opportunity to apply for. There are three waivers that are, that are listed there. Uh, the rural exemption is, is the first and foremost. That is for any county under a population of 70,000, for which Lake County is. We are, as of the latest figures, at about 64,000. Uh, there are some other waiver opportunities. Low-population waivers, that's, uh, the intent there is, is for counties that are over 70,000 but have, uh, have certain areas of the county that, that would qualify, such as a, a city with a population less than 7,500 and, and less than 5,000 disposal tons and unincorporated areas that, that meet the, uh, the next line there. Um, and then there are, is also a high-elevation waiver. Uh, this came out during the, the review period, out of a concern, to be honest, for bear country, that if, if you're above a certain altitude and, and there's no magic to 4,500 feet, bears live at, at, uh, you know, under 4,500 feet. But, um, in a desire to establish some, um, a figure that they could go, go by, that was how that was established. But for Lake County, uh, we do have the opportunity to, uh, apply for a waiver that would encompass the entirety of the county to include the, the incorporated cities. Um, and now that does not exempt, uh, the, the county or the, or the cities from, uh, from all components of 1383. Um, I'll, I'll jump, um, back a slide and, and just kind of touch on really what it exempts, or would exempt us from is, uh, organic waste collection services, organic waste capacity planning, and procurement of organic waste products. But there are certainly components that we are still, um, responsible to implement. Uh, so jumping ahead to the next slide here, uh, this is a generic slide that is, uh, you know, made for, you know, kind of generic counties, generic cities. We're not all established the same way, organized the same way. But the, the intent here is to show that, um, that SB 1383, in as much as CalRecycle implemented the regulations, um, it, it encompasses the entire county or the entire city. Um, so it, it is, uh, in our, in the case of Lake County, the fact that, um, we have the opportunity to be, to waive, exempt ourselves from the organic waste, uh, components of this largely takes the, um, the solid waste industry component out of it, uh, with, with an exception that we'll talk about. Um, but it, it still has some, some significant implications for primarily, um, for the edible food recovery program and CalGreen Building Standards and a Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. Uh, those components are, um, are, are being worked on. Environmental health, uh, for the edible food recovery program, community development for the CalGreen Building Standards, which actually already is, is adopted. Uh, the Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or MWOLO, is, is currently underway. Um, had, it's certainly been in, in communication with, um, with the department heads of both of those, uh, those departments. Um, and, and they're, they're working towards those. Um, the, the state is, in as much as 2022 is, is, um, when the regulations take effect, that, you know, that they're, they're just, they want to ensure that they, they see progress by the different, uh, the different counties that, that are subject to, uh, to the regulations. So, so that, that is in the works. Um, and, you know, I think it's important to note one particular component of this here that, that I want to point out is, is the edible food recovery component. Um, it, it's not as though the county, um, has to go out and, and recover the food. The intent, the, the intent here is that the county would oversee a, a program that would, um, basically regulate something that is already going on through, uh, through food banks, free kitchens, uh, you know, and, and so they've established various tiers for edible food to be recovered. You can see tier one. It, it doesn't show the date that that would start, but that's 2022 when the regulations take effect. That, that first tier, wholesale food vendors, food service providers and distributors, grocery stores, greater than 10,000 square feet, and supermarkets, those would be the, the first tier of, of entities that, um, uh, that would be focused on for edible food recovery. Uh, tier two would, would follow. Um, the regulations obviously define a lot of these. Um, and, and in as much as I'm, I'm not going into, into the detail on, on how that is going to be established, environmental health has that. They, they're, they're aware of it, and, and it's, it's more of a, um, monitoring and enforcement of, um, of this and communication with those, um, with those vendors and, and providers. So at this point, I'm really just going to end my, end my screen and, and talk about the, the waiver. I'll start my video again. Um, the, the waiver that I mentioned that is a, um, it's a, they, an exemption, that we, we would be exempting ourselves should the board approve that. It's a, it's a resolution, um, that I, I think was not actually included. I can share my screen, um, for that, and I, and I will right now. Uh, it's a resolution, uh, opting to affirm an exemption from the requirements of organic waste collection, and-
And if I may clarify, the resolution was, um, in the packet. So it was included.
Okay, good, good. Well, then, then maybe this is moot point, but I'll, I'll, I'll share it nevertheless.
Mr. Chairperson, included in the packet, but the title did not call it out.
Oh, in the heading of the agenda?
It did not. So the resolution can be discussed, but, but adopted next week, carried over.
Yeah, so let's discuss it, and then we'll put it in the consent agenda next week if, uh, the board, uh, doesn't have any, uh, a conversation that makes it seem controversial.
Okay, very good. So, so in, in, in short, uh, this is a resolution that would exempt the county from, uh, the, the organic waste collection components that would also, um, uh, extend to procurement of organic waste, um, items. And, and just for an example of what that might include, uh, you know, just in, in my department alone, parks, um, we would, and, and for that matter, public works, there would be a requirement for, um, uh, for, say, uh, mulch to, to ensure that it was from, uh, uh, organic waste diversion. Uh, we would still be required to, uh, to pursue a, a paper product procurement, which we already have. Uh, we would just be updating that for the, the new code. But in, in short, what this exempts us from is curbside collection of, of organic waste, a, a, another, another bin that would be specific to food waste, uh, organic waste. So I, I, I apologize that this was, was not included in there. We will certainly put that on, uh, for, for either next week or the, or the week following.
All right. Thank you very much. And, and my mistake, it was not, um, an attachment on the 6.2. I was looking at jumping ahead to 7.6, which is also related, um, to your department. So I apologize for that. Uh, but thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Scott.
I definitely agree with this resolution. It's just not feasible for us to have organic waste collection. But I would like us to, um, educate our public on how easy it is to compost, uh, maybe working with the schools for composting and, um, how they can use the, that material in their garden. So, um, you know, maybe something good could come out of this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, we'll go along the same lines as Supervisor Scott. Obviously, in agreement. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Got it? All right, excellent. Yeah, it was moved around. Um, so obviously in agreement with the ordinance, looking for the exemption. Uh, but I agree with Supervisor Scott, you know, just educating the public on, um, you know, how to get rid of this waste at home. I know that there are a lot of programs and other things that are happening throughout the county, especially with our supermarkets and other stuff. They support our senior centers and those types of things. So there's a lot of stuff already happening. Now, we just- Now we just got to get this all finalized. And I was briefed because I am an alternate on ESJPA. Obviously Lars goes to the meetings, and I know there's another one this week that he'll be attending. But I was briefed on it and gained complete support on what Public Services and Lars is trying to do with this, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, I know a lot of municipalities in Southern California, in the Bay Area, they'll reach out to their residents and show how a worm bin can be designed and implemented at home or a home composter. I know the city of Pomona was really effective at getting that out to people. So there's a lot of ways that we can work with this. And, you know, I have a little rolling composter at home for just food scraps, for veggies and things. So it's really effective, and I think that there's a lot that we can do to work with our public to reduce this waste.
So I have a quick question. I think I know the answer due to the fact that we are, Supervisor Crandall and myself are on the Solid Waste Task Force. This is something that eventually rural counties will be forced to do in the future. It's just at this moment in time, we have the exemption, and who knows for how long the exemption will be allowed. But I agree that looking at the successes of other counties in getting this going, I know I did live in Humboldt County when they started doing their process before the state regulations came out, and that seemed to have gone well. But I think that it's something to look into. And I'm going to, one of my questions to you is, I believe that there is a higher possibility in just the composting aspect, if we do it in a large scale throughout the whole county, to help us with generating electricity or energy that we can harness. Am I correct on that versus the rest of the waste that is disposed of in the landfill?
That, yeah, if I'm understanding the statement, that organics essentially is what would create the methane that then would provide the opportunity to generate the electricity, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Correct, correct. And I think that having it in one specific area might help us to be able to generate that rather than trying to find a way. Because I know the landfill is difficult. It's not the high capacity that other landfills see. And so the amount of methane coming out is not maximized in comparison. And so I'm very interested in looking at ways how this not only helps us have a cleaner and better environment and a better control of food as well, and not control of food, but control of waste of food. But also the idea that we can harness it into energy as well in the long run. So I think there's a lot of positives, and I'd love for us to continue looking at other counties and seeing their successes and trying to carbon copy them. Because I think if we can implement this before the state forces us to, I think that's to a benefit as long as we can make sure that it's feasible.
A couple of points on that. The landfill, the organic, or the organics that are currently in landfills that may do what's called landfill gas to energy projects, this is actually a little bit of a catch 22. The organics, if we're reducing it from the waste stream, that would reduce their, basically reduces their fuel to generate that energy. So there could be a risk for those landfills. We do not do landfill gas to energy. We do capture our methane through a collection system at the landfill. And in theory, this would be reducing that, the amount that we would be capturing. But the other point is that the 1383 is going to be reducing, as indicated, the amount that goes into the landfill. So capturing it at a landfill may not be the option, but there are other options out there. And I'll reference the energy studies that we have going on through train, specifically the advanced energy solutions that they're looking at. And that is one component that they are factoring in, particularly as it relates to 1383.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? Can't find the public. There they are. And anybody with their hands up again? Click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or dial star nine on your phone. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back for action. Actually, we cannot take action since we don't have the resolution attached to the agenda item. And so we will see that agenda item coming back to us next week.
Very good. Thank you, board.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. And with that, let's go ahead and move on. We have a topic for Public Services as well on item 7.6, so let's go ahead and take that up now. Consideration of Solid Waste Handling and Collection Company Change of Assignment.
All right. Good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director again. Appreciate you taking this up. I know it was on non-time. So the county currently has two franchise waste haulers, Lake County Waste Solutions, in generally, I'll say generally, the northwestern portion of the county and South Lake Refuge and Recycling generally in the south and east portion of the county. For about 15 years, Lake County Waste Solutions has been the unincorporated, the northwestern portion and geographically the larger area. They've been the franchise hauler for waste collection and handling. In July, about a month ago, Lake County Waste Solutions notified Public Services of their intent to sell to another company, Waste Connections. And the agreement that we have with Lake County Waste Solutions had, it includes a section that clarifies the process to go through this change of control. They were required to provide a variety of information, essentially to verify that the company that is the proposed, would be the new owner, has the capacity to perform under the existing contract. I'll note that Lake County Waste Solutions and their, I guess I'll call it the parent company CNS, CNS Group Holdings, they own and operate a variety of companies and facilities in the solid waste world around us. They own and operate the Lakeport Transfer Station on Soto Bay Road. They also manage the waste collection for the city of Clearlake through Clearlake Waste Solutions, as well as Ukiah Waste Solutions and the, what's called a MUR for a material resource recovery facility in Ukiah, where the bulk of our waste that is collected in the unincorporated county under Lake County Waste Solutions is hauled to their facility, and it's sorted through, and then the waste comes back to the landfill. So all of those entities are being purchased by Waste Connections. The city of Clearlake recently had a similar presentation to their city council. The reason theirs was ahead of ours. They have a different agreement that requires, to be honest, it required less documentation. For example, for Lake County, we required the actual agreement with redacted information, but the agreement between the two entities. So once we received the full packet, then I was comfortable submitting it to the board. So there is a requirement that a resolution is provided, that the resolution that was referenced in the previous agenda item, resolution consenting to the change of control from Lake County Waste Solutions to Waste Connections. So with that, I'll close out and answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
So I do have to make a quick statement, and that is that I think that CNS Waste Solution has been a great partner. I know that I appreciate the community aspect of how they help out with some of our community cleanups. They have kept their prices, in my opinion, very low when comparing to other neighboring counties and neighboring services that they receive. And I hope that's what we will continue to see. I know that there have been increases in the past to the rates, and I'm sure that we will see those. But I hope that they stay and maintain within the range that we have been seeing to make sure that it is affordable and is, can continue into the future for people to be able to afford to do this the right way and how to get rid of waste from their residences. So I appreciate the past and looking forward to the future. So looking forward to approving this resolution.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I'd like to echo that, but also add that when I first started as a supervisor, there was a lot of concern about Lake County Waste Solutions. And they started coming to town halls. They started putting out education. And after a while, people are answering their own question, well, not answering their own question, but someone from the community will answer the questions because they've been educated. And so I appreciate that education that they put forward, came to the meetings. And again, I hope the same thing happens with this transition, so.
And if I could add to that, the Vice President of Lake County Waste Solutions, Bruce McCracken, will be staying on under Waste Connections as, I'm not sure of the title, but essentially our point of contact with the garbage company. Let's just use it that way. Our direct point of contact will remain the same.
Thank you very much. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? Let's go ahead and open up for the public. Please raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room or if you have a comment in the boardroom. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Your board may consider offering the resolution, which will effectuate the change of assignment referenced.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please. And thank you, Ms. Grant.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Ewing.
Thank you. And a specific thank you to Anita and her staff for helping me go through the agreement and get this done the right way. So thank you, Anita.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to item 7.2. Consideration of Letter Authorizing North Coast Opportunities to Apply on behalf of Lake County Risk Reduction Authority for the 2021 California Fire Safe Council County Coordinator's Grant Project and Serve as the Grant Subrecipient. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair Sabatier. We come to you today as a Risk Reduction Authority, and I know Jessica will speak on this item also, but looking for support to go for the County Coordinator's Grant, which is an opportunity right now through the California Fire Safe Council for the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. We are asking that NCO be the agency that we support in going after that grant. We've had multiple meetings since NCO has been on board and really looked at a collaboration opportunity for all the agencies that may be eligible for this opportunity. And NCO seems to be the one that's going to fit this. This is an opportunity for us to bring the funds in to continue growing the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. And today, we're just looking for that full support from the board as we move forward with this opportunity.
Just to clarify the process, it's required that counties apply for this grant, and that's why the Risk Reduction Authority is authorizing NCO to be the fiscal sponsor. And then those funds will go to, through NCO, to the Fire Safe Council to set up that coordinator.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions about this item?
So I do have one quick question. If you can clarify, it says, North Coast Opportunities is the subrecipient. The recipient is Lake County? Since they're trying to get the grant on behalf of Lake County?
Yeah, and our Fire Safe Council is currently an ad hoc committee under the Board of Supervisors, but it's working to reestablish itself as a nonprofit. So that's why we have NCO kind of facilitating the process for us, because we need that coordinator to get it to the place where it stands alone from us.
Right. And I know that I was looking at the grant online, and it does say Lake County. But obviously, it also says that Risk Reduction Authorities, nonprofits and others, I was kind of led there through some conversations that I had with admin. It's, the letter reads differently than what you would expect it to read like, just so that it meets the requirements of the grant. Because obviously, it's going to be the Risk Reduction Authority that's going to be looking at the decision-making of how to utilize the funds. And North Coast Opportunity is just going to be the subrecipient and the one working on the behalf of the Risk Reduction Authority to get it done correctly. And just the way it reads, it's a little convoluted because we're trying to make sure it fits within the parameters of what the grant asks us to do. So I just, I wanted to ask those questions, knowing the answers, so that we can make sure that it was public and clear as to what was going on and how it was going to go. And I have to say, I'm seeing a lot of action coming from the Risk Reduction Authority. I'm proud of what's happening over there. Thank you so much for the work that is occurring there. It seems to be expanding more and more. You got the cities on board. You got the water districts coming. We're getting grant opportunities, and this is exactly the position that we wanted to be in. So this is great. Thank you very much.
Just a follow-up comment, and thank you for those clarifying questions that you have, Bernal. So we just are always educating. But, you know, one of these steps that we worked hard for the last two and a half years was getting NCO on board as a nonprofit and help us be the coordinator. We really do see a bright future in this opportunity here. And what we were looking after the CMAT, the Community Mitigation Assessment Team Evaluation that they came in, the first one in California's history through U.S. Forest Service, was we were looking at the opportunity, in my vision from the beginning, the Risk Reduction Authority was the umbrella that everything was under. Well, when we did the CMAT process, it's the opposite way. We are the conduit for all the agencies that are working on, as you said, the cities, the counties, our nonprofit agencies, Clerk, RCD, all these other things, where we can support these opportunities to bring dollars into the county and figure out where the best fit is. And this is just the beginning step. When we came to you, myself and Jessica, asking for the $26,000 and, you know, getting us the opportunity to get the coordinator in, this was the vision we had, to be able to bring these dollars in and make this a standalone opportunity to work on all risks in Lake County. And obviously, fire mitigation and other things of this, possibilities are all in the realm of what we're doing. So I'm excited where it's going to, and we're going to continue growing on this.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to point out that I've had many opportunities to work with North Coast Opportunities, and they have proven to be great partners in grant writing and very successful in bringing millions of dollars to Lake County, so I definitely support this.
And without any further comments?
I don't, do we need to hear from Tammy?
Yeah, I was thinking, I was just going to say that.
Let me see. I do not see.
I do not see her.
Yes, Tammy Widener, if we can go.
Oh, Tammy, how was that?
Oh, sorry.
She was on, but she may have dropped off.
I apologize for that. I do not see that name.
Okay.
So go ahead, and let's open it up for the public. If there's any public comments, please raise your hand in the Zoom room. Phone 6205. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson, and I have a question. From the public's point of view, it's hard to understand exactly how the money is flowing. And we have common understandings that when we get a service, we actually in some way pay for that service. So for instance, if a broker handles our money, the broker is actually making money off of handling our money. That's how they survive. And so I would like to ask that the county and NCO be simply in plain sight about the cost of this service to Lake County. It's not that there's no cost. There obviously is a cost. And it's our precious dollars that we need for risk reduction in this incredibly incendiary county that urgently needs mitigation and brush management. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and wondering if there's a response?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, Bart. But we do have a standing agreement that was approved here by the board for NCO's services. If you'd like to contact us, we can get you that information. But it was approved here at the board level for the contracting services. I'm probably going to get the exact amount. I don't have it right offhand. Around 50...
What, the agreement you're referring to was approved by the Risk Reduction Authority itself. There's an agreement between the Risk Reduction Authority and NCO for the services that they provide to the Risk Reduction Authority.
Thank you very much, Carol.
But again, this grant is to develop capacity within... But again, this grant is to develop capacity within the Fire Safe Councils and hire coordinators. So this, this funding is not actually for the mitigation of hazardous vegetation or any of that work. This is for building the capacity so that Fire Safe Councils across California can function the way that they, they need to function.
But this would use for, would be used for Lake County Fire Councils?
Yeah, well, Lake County's Fire Safe Council. We have South Lake Fire Safe Council, but this is for Lake County's Fire Safe Council.
Yes. And I believe, if you don't mind my kind of segueing into what I believe the question was, is there any part of this grant that is being requested that would go to the grant writers? Or is this entirely for the project of developing the Fire Safe Councils here in Lake County?
Well, I wish that Tammy was here to speak to that exactly. I know Bart was present for our Risk Reduction Authority yesterday where we went over this, where Tammy spoke about the different areas of where this funding's going to go. But some of it is for NCO to help facilitate this work.
And I want to say, in my experience of grants, and again, I can't speak specifically to this one, but it's always limited in the grant what can be used for the administrative part of the grant. Maybe it's like 10% is usually the maximum, but it doesn't have to be exactly that number. But yeah, I can't speak specifically to this one. I did not look at the specifics of how that grant could be utilized. Okay, thank you very much. There was another, nope, no other hand up. And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion to approve the letter authorizing North Coast Opportunities to apply on behalf of Lake County Risk Reduction Authority for the 2021 California Fire Safe Council County Coordinators' Grant Project and serve as the grant subrecipient, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 7.3. Consideration of Ordinance Amending Urgency Ordinance Number 3108, requiring all persons, regardless of COVID-19 vaccination status, wear face coverings in county facilities. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, back on August 3rd, your board adopted Urgency Ordinance Number 3108, and it requires that all persons in county facilities wear face coverings regardless of their vaccination status. At the time your board approved that, you also directed staff to develop some language for a trigger that would lead to rescission of the ordinance when conditions improve. And so what we have before you today for your consideration would be that, that this ordinance requiring masking in our facilities be in place as long as the COVID-19 transmission rate in Lake County is moderate or above. Moderate transmission is, as defined by the California Department of Public Health, is not more than 5.9 cases per 100,000 and testing positivity of not more than 4.9%. And so, under what is being proposed today, when the transmission rate in Lake County falls below moderate, the ordinance would then be calendared for reconsideration at your next board meeting. Depending on the timing of it, the ordinance could be taken up as a regular agenda item if we have a board agenda that is to be posted soon. Or it could be taken up as an extra item, given that it would meet the criteria as urgent. Or it could, a special meeting of your board could be called to take it up. And so, based on the transmission rate at that time and other critical local factors, such as the emergency room and ICU capacities or other factors happening in the county, your board could then consider taking action to rescind the ordinance.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from board members? So upon reading this, I found a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. One is, there's no timeline for how long we've reached those numbers. And I think that we need to kind of mimic what was there before, which is if you're within those, that range for two weeks, then you can go ahead and drop down to, it just seems like it might be too quick, where the numbers might be low today, but all of a sudden they jump back up tomorrow. And then we said, we're done, but yet, we're still in the same potential situation we're in. So I'd love to add, for the course of two weeks and going from Tuesday to Tuesday, that, or Monday to Monday, where the next day on Tuesday is when we make those, that change, or whatever it is that we choose. But I also don't feel it needs to come back to the board. I think we set the triggers and we say that it will, the following day, 24 hours later, is when the change occurs. And I think that way, it's not based on how we feel, it's based on specific trigger points, and not if we feel like saying yes or no today, which could change based on many different things. Personal experiences with COVID within our friends and families, or things like that, where all of a sudden 5.9 or 4.9 is not, doesn't feel good enough for us because of our personal experiences. So I think it should just kind of be like the tiered system was, where it's just there and we know it's going to happen, and we know when the changes occur. On the other side, there's also no trigger to bring it back. And I think that instead of waiting and waiting and waiting till one of us or the staff decides to bring this back, saying, hey, it's winter time, we're seeing another surge, as some are anticipating will happen during our wintertime, why don't we also put a trigger for when in our county facilities masking is mandatory again? And I propose that we use the purple tier, because the moderate tier was the orange tier, we use the purple tier. When we reach 10 cases per 100,000 or 8% positivity rate, that at that point, we want masking again mandated in our facilities. This time though, I think we need to act faster and give it a one-week period of being in those numbers rather than two-week period. I think that having the trigger of the on and off is easy for us to know where we are and what will happen. And that way, it's not again up to us and how we feel on a day-to-day basis, it's just what we approve. Of course, any of us can bring back the ordinance to change it if we choose, but I think it's easier for the public to have those things set in stone and to know what expectations are. So that's what I would like to offer. And the last thing, and I don't want to make that change today, because I think it takes a little bit more research and a little bit more understanding. Cases are cases, hospitalizations are hospitalizations, and deaths are deaths. Eventually, we will have a lot of cases and not much hospitalization, and definitely not much deaths. And so the case rate eventually will become a moot point because of vaccination rates that we see throughout the state of California. It's a large, the more you're vaccinated, the larger the percentages of your cases that you are seeing that are vaccinated but not hospitalized. For example, LA, I believe, I forget who it was that was telling me, if it was Adventist Health, 25% of their, of their population that are getting COVID are vaccinated, but they're not showing up at the hospitals either. Right now, where, last I checked, we're at about 10 or 11% of our cases were vaccinated. And again, we're not seeing those cases necessarily showing up in the same numbers in our hospitals. So hospitalization rate, I think eventually needs to be involved in this, because we're going to see cases, and if those cases aren't going to the hospital, our issue is overwhelming the healthcare system not just having cases. And so I don't want that changed today, because I think it takes more conversation and more research, but I think eventually it does need to get there as we see the increase of vaccination rates, which means a decrease in the severe impact of the virus. Supervisor Pyska.
Yes, so we did, we did talk about that in our committee, and, you know, setting our trigger to go into masking at the purple measures, and then coming out at the orange for moderate transmission. I disagree that it happens automatically, because as we know, there's a lot we don't know. And there's a lot of things that are happening and changing. And, you know, if this were to happen on a Friday night, then we're going to ask staff to work all weekend. I think it's reasonable for us to come back here and have that conversation and make a decision. I feel pretty confident that we're not going to make emotional decisions about this. We haven't so far. So, you know, in my mind, it's better for us to just come back and have that conversation. It's not going to make a big difference, maybe a few days, but having the, having that two-week period is important, and we need, we can set the thresholds for what day that is. And if it's a Monday to Monday to Monday, then that makes sense for us to be here on a Tuesday making that decision. As far as the hospitalizations being put into this, I, you know, I think that's something that we can talk about at a later date. When we talk about virus spread within the community, it's still going to be, you know, moderate spread, even though we don't have people hospitalized. It's still going to be something that's spreading through our community. And, you know, we may have lower hospitalizations, but lower hospitalizations compared to where we're at right now is still a high amount of hospitalizations. And when, and that's the time when we have mutations, you know, so I think that's something that we could table and come back to later. But I'm totally fine with, with the ideas that you presented, with waiting two weeks, setting purple for the trigger to go into masking, and orange to trigger to come out.
And if I may add, in one week for the going into purple.
Going into purple, yep.
So two weeks orange, one week purple, and using those data sets. Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, just, just a comment, obviously, you know, obviously, we're always adapting and learning. So I agree with the triggers, you know, I think that's a good suggestion, the two weeks, you know, just as we had done before. And I am in agreement, obviously, with the one week into the purple. So, you know, I think they are good suggestions. I do like the idea of it not having to come back all the time. We have these triggers set, but I know each and every one of us will be keeping an eye on it, and if there's a conversation that needs to be had, any one of us can bring it back. So I am in agreement with those suggestions as we move forward.
Okay. Any further comments? Supervisor Scott.
I definitely agree with both triggers. I don't feel it needs to come back. I like to see it automatically, because we could always bring an item back if we feel that we need to readdress something.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I agree.
All right, it's 10:45 a.m. Let's go ahead and come back to order and continue. We are on Item 7.4. Consideration of A, Addition of Special Meeting Dates to the Board's Annual Meeting Calendar for 2021 for the Purpose of Redistricting Public Hearings, and B, Redistricting Public Hearing Schedule. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deputy CAO Matthew Rothstein will present this item.
Good morning, Board. As always, it's a privilege to have the opportunity to present to you. I wanted to, we're, this morning, we're considering adding some special meetings and to facilitate our redistricting public hearing schedule. And as your board is aware, county staff have been working with Margaret Long, Apprentice Long, to develop and facilitate an open and inclusive redistricting process. Your board, as part of this process, is required to host a series of four public hearings, and my apologies for a typo in the memo, it says five, but the Elections Code requires four public hearings to receive input regarding potential changes to district boundaries. And at least one of those meetings must be in the evening or on a weekend day, but certainly there's an encouragement to facilitate those meetings at a range of times in order to enable the broadest possible participation. So the hearing schedule that is proposed in the memo was developed with those considerations in mind, and they require, will require that your board add three special meetings to your calendar, which would be Tuesday, August 31, Saturday, October 2, and Tuesday, November 30. And there are some times proposed for those meetings to commence in the memo, and I believe that CAO Hutchinson has an update that may change the start time of one of those meetings.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So looking at the proposed meeting date of August 31, and the time there in the memo is suggesting 1:00 or 2:00 p.m., I just wanted to offer that your board may want to consider making that the normal time your board meets of 9:00 a.m. And the reason I suggest that is because I do anticipate that there will be some other regular agenda items that need to be heard that day. As you know, the way it stands now, if we don't add that special meeting, your board would have two Tuesdays in a row without a meeting, and this is a difficult time to go that long without meetings. It just happens to be the way the dates fell. And so I think there will be other regular business on that day, and the public is accustomed to you coming together at 9:00 a.m., so you may want to consider that.
Thank you very much.
And if I can just add a bit of additional background, whatever time we do host the public hearing, it needs to be a timed item, if it's part of one of your standard or special Board of Supervisors' meetings. So we will want to set that time so it can be appropriately noticed for the public.
I appreciate that. That was going to be one of my comments, is to make sure to have a specific time, because that just makes sense to do it that way. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? So I do have one comment, and I'm going to make an assumption, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but these meetings, I don't know about the Saturday one, but at least the Tuesday ones, other than the regular board meeting, will be also on Zoom. It doesn't specifically specify Zoom or in, in, in public, in person, and I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that we are going to simplify the process by making it available on Zoom. That way, you do not have to be here in person physically.
Right, these would be run just like any other regular board meeting. And so if you want to comment, you can do that in the boardroom, or you can do that in Zoom. And if you just want to watch, you can do that on Granicus, you can do it on Facebook Live, or you can watch it after the fact on the YouTube page.
And the Saturday, same thing?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sure that we will do, as you mentioned, it'll be on Granicus Live. If it's on Granicus, that means they'll also have the availability to do ecomments. That way, we will get that information, it will be part of the public record.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure and put that out there. Any further comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments on this item or questions? Looking at the board and looking at the Zoom room. And seeing none, let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the addition of the special meetings Tuesday, August 31, starting at, do I need to go, starting at 9:00 a.m. and give a specific time?
Mr. Supervisor Simon, I think you can just, so we have a attached calendar that would show the meeting dates. I think you could just approve the proposed calendar. However, with that said, that doesn't include the times, so maybe, pardon me? Yeah. So, so you probably should be deliberate and call out the three with the specific times.
Okay, yeah, because the Tuesday, August 31 does say commence at 1:00 p.m.
Yes.
Right.
And so does your board wish to do that at 9:00? Is there consensus?
Looks like you have consensus to me.
Okay, so would motion from the board be the addition of the special meetings Tuesday, August 31, to commence at 9:00 a.m. Saturday, October 2, to commence at 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, November 30, to commence at 9:00 a.m. And, I missed one, I apologize.
Tuesday, November 30, is already a scheduled meeting, it's just on there, listed there for your information.
Okay, so.
So there's just the three, the last one being Tuesday, November 30.
August 31, starting at 9:00 a.m. Saturday, October 2, to commence at 10:00 a.m. And Tuesday, November 30, to commence at 9:00 a.m. Is that okay? Or do we?
Yes, perfect.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
November 2nd is not?
November 2nd is a regular board meeting, so there was no need to add it to the calendar today.
Right, but for public awareness, it'll also be one of the redistricting hearings.
Correct. Okay, moving on to Item 7.5. Discussion and Consideration of an Ordinance. Discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code relating to administrative fines and penalties. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Good morning, Board.
Now, let's go ahead and, if you can be muted on Zoom, perfect. You should be good.
All right, thank you.
Except I think you need to turn on your microphone. I, I think you turned it off.
There, hello? Okay. There's a term luddite. It means not technologically advanced. My picture shows up next to that definition. The, uh, the matter before you today is the discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter 13 relating to administrative fines and penalties. Uh, I'm not sure if what your board has before you actually shows track changes. If it does not, I do have hard copies that show those changes in red. If you would prefer hard copies, I can make those available to you.
I did see some highlighted text and some bluish-purple, depending on what my color sight is, uh, but did not see any red lining on the, uh, document itself.
Would you like hard copies? And I can make one available also to Supervisor Scott via email and one for the press. So this is nothing. It should be four of them.
Thank you.
Okay, you will see that, um... One, two, Supervisor Scott. You'll see from the memo that these are, um, there's been some reorganizations, certainly some changes in terms of beefing up the ordinances. I did go back and look at earlier meetings where your board had expressed concerns in terms of the strength of the penalties imposed. You wanted to make sure that you had options for more significant penalties for the AVO program, for example, for hazardous vegetation, et cetera. Uh, by beefing up those penalties, you'll see that, that will apply to any of, of those areas of nuisance abatement that are in Chapter 13. I've reorganized and put all of the types of penalties together in one section. The point of a penalty ordinance is to ensure that people understand what they risk by violation. And one of the problems that, that occurs with ordinances frequently is things are added and there's almost kind of a haphazard effect from those additions, so I tried to put them all together. Uh, beginning on page one, you'll see just simply the addition of fines and two penalties in the title and Section 13.45. On page three, there was a request to define cannabis operations without the word "business", preceding activity, and that change appears there. Uh, moving on to page seven, you'll see that, that has been reconfigured. The, the infraction section under 48.2 is, is beefed up to include separate violations for each day. The amount for an infraction is set by Government Code 25132. There's nothing that can be done about that, uh, but the per-day penalty. And I, I understand that it's rare that your board even considers those infractions from a criminal standpoint, but it remains something in your arsenal should you want to use it. And then the amount of penalty other, which addresses the $1,000 for each calendar day from the date of transmittal of the notice of violation, which is also an additional hammer, because the penalties accrue as soon as that notice of violation has been transmitted. I did include also, there was a request from your board to require, under certain circumstances, that the responsible person have to respond within 15 days. Whether you want to include that, considering the fact that it begins now to accrue from the notice of transmittal, you may not, but you may still want it in there as an additional option. 48.4 are penalties for failure to obtain or maintain any permit related to cannabis. Uh, the language beginning on page eight does beef up the, the issues for these stiffer penalties and does that because the Constitution prohibits excessive fines and fees. So that means that your board has to have certain findings, certain rationale that justifies it, uh, fees of, of a certain type. And so that appears on pages eight and nine. The administrative penalty, uh, shows on page nine. The amount of that penalty is on page 10. You also indicated that you wanted something that would structure these for 30 days, would not necessarily always be the timeframe, so that you'll see that when it comes to page 11, uh, for failure to obtain a county permit, there's a per-cannabis-plant penalty. And also a specific reference that, under certain circumstances where there's an imminent danger to public health, summary abatement would be employed, which would obviate that 30-day notice requirement that your board was concerned about. I included an interest provision on the amounts owed. Your board may or may not want it, but it's certainly something you can do. Um, and again, at the bottom of page 14, it refers to the requirement to, that, that the responsible person have to respond and address certain violations. That's something that can be included. Uh, from what I understood, understood from your board, it was something that in more complicated or complex cases, you wanted to plan. This gives the ability to call that out. It doesn't have to be used for everything. If you've just got a pile of garbage in your driveway, the plan is to dispose of it properly, so. Then you'll see at beginning on page 17, those are just strikeouts because the sections have been renumbered in order to put them together in one, one particular section. And going on then, and only to page 25, under sub-D on that page, there was the request that previously it said the enforcement officer wasn't required to attend the hearing. Now the language is the enforcement officer, or if unavailable, his or their supervisor shall attend the hearing. So that is it in a nutshell. As I said, the, the point of all of this was to beef up the penalties, um, and to organize it in a way that someone could look at it from start to finish and understand that different conduct. And rather than calling out specific things other than the cannabis, um, which also could be adjusted, uh, the penalties for anything that's not an infraction have simply been made more onerous and bumped up. And obviously, the extent of those penalties and how much you charge would depend upon the circumstances, but that would apply to AVO, to hazardous vegetation, to anything else that your board suffered to apply it to. So it gives you the flexibility. I was trying to make sure I was responsive to your wishes while at the same time giving you as much flexibility in the ordinance as there could be within the confines of a fine penalty ordinance. So... That is it in a nutshell.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments about this document that we are reviewing today?
I do, but I just lost my thing.
And, and I should say that this was my intention, just to present this as a draft. I'm certain your board may have many changes or adjustments. Uh, the only thing that I would suggest is changes and adjustments, uh, should be absolutely put over to another time because, again, it's, it's good to avoid that hodgepodge, bedspread quilt kind of presentation with an ordinance to make sure that everything stays in, in a relatively organized format if possible.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so there was a couple of concerns that I had, and, and we could work, probably work this out easy, but I, I think there is an answer for the one that I'm bringing up. But someone had asked me, uh, constituent had asked me about, um, instead of 15 days being 10 days, but I noticed above on 48.2, it states that the penalty to be imposed shall be calculated based on a number of calendar days from the date of transmittal. So they would still accrue the fines from the date that it's been, um, addressed initially, right?
Yeah, that's what I had said. I included the, the 15 days when there was a request for a report, but I had also backed up the accrual to the date of transmittal of the violation. So you, you may not, I, I left it in there as an either/or in case you didn't want to back the penalty up that far. As I said, it's a work in progress. But if you do decide that the penalty accrues from the date of transmittal, you don't really need, unless you want to exact an additional penalty, that 15-day timeframe.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. All right, I think that, I think I'll go with the transmittal if, if, if anything. And then, um, there's also, and this is, this is the question I have, owners, a lot of owners in specific areas are changing properties, like really, really vastly. And so if, uh, is this, how is this gonna, is there something in here that, that, to that effect? That we can control with that? Um, or, for example, some folks are getting these charges or getting tagged, red-tagged in, let's say, uh, the, the community growth boundary, and then they change ownership and leave, and another person accrues the property. Um, and, you know, specific, uh, paperwork and, and other things are, are not followed through on. And so, uh, I want to make sure that, you know, whoever commits the crime at least has to pay the fine.
May I inquire?
Please.
Uh, so this would be a situation then where someone has received a notice, but then the property is in the process of changing hands, and the new owner has received no notice, and all of a sudden, there's abatement action?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that is a very good addition, sir. Um, I can certainly add in language that will, that will address that. It is more difficult to hold somebody accountable, but not impossible, given the, the remedy options available under the ordinance. So I can adjust, I can add a provision that will reflect that the, the owner at the time the violations occurred continues to be responsible.
Thank you.
If I can just piggyback on that, because that, that is an important issue that we're dealing with. Is it, it, I, I don't know what the rules and regulations are for real estate. Maybe you can help me, Supervisor Pyska. But what kind of disclosure is, is necessary to make when there is a notice of violation for code violations on a specific property and that property goes through the process of being sold? Is it mandatory to disclose those notice of violations and those, uh, code violations?
Normally, and it, when a person has the opportunity to challenge any type of notice, a notice of violation, that precludes it from being recorded because the, there's been no due process afforded to that individual to plead a case, offer a defense, et cetera. However, with regard to the administrative penalties, um, there may be a way to include a recordation element that would put everyone on notice. It wouldn't be a real estate notice, but it would still be a notice. I can certainly look into that when I bring it back to see. And I can check to see whether a real estate disclosure, of course, that requires a, um, many other actors other than your board to participate, but I can look at that as well.
Okay. I, I was just curious, because I know there's a lot of others that are involved, and, uh, the city of Clear Lake just went through an issue where there's been three years' worth of code violations, and then a new owner came in saying they had no idea about the violations. And it just seems to me like somewhere along the line, that should almost be a part of the process, but I don't know enough of the real estate process to say that that has to be.
Well, I can tell you that once the appeal period for any of these violations has run, whatever it is, then that information can certainly be recorded because the person has either declined his, his or her due process rights, or has, has acted upon them and your board has made a decision. So in that event, there's, that information can duly, can be duly recorded in the recorder's office, and at least people would have access to it. I don't know, because I'm not a Realtor, but I would think that most Realtors will look to see what's on a property at the time they're representing it.
Right. Thank you.
There's no requirement to do a title check, though?
No. But if a property has tons of...
Especially when you're just buying it from your friend, because you want to continue growing.
Yeah, exactly.
We can pass this pest inspection, too. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Crandall?
And I don't even think this pertains, but it just, you brought up real estate, and I know that in, in specific areas, there's problems with Realtors, um, promoting that the property is, has a water or a permit or, for cannabis or a water permit for different things, and it's not actually happening. And I don't think this addresses here. I think we have to address that a different way, but I just want to highlight that, because you mentioned real estate and some of the, uh, the fines being passed on, and so it just kind of touches a little bit.
I think that's more of an ethical violation than it is a code violation.
It, it is, but that is something that certainly affected departments like community development could always produce an informational, and not accusing, obviously, anyone of anything, but simply saying, please be aware that although you may hear that a property has certain permits, you should check that for yourself. Please be aware that not all, uh, judgments, liens, or violations are going to be made known to you. Uh, you should also check the property for that type of recordation. Certainly, just a, a little informational sheet at the counter would, would be helpful to people. That's something that your board could consider. Be separate apart from this, as you said, Supervisor, but it would still be something that, that may assist people in, in understanding what their obligation is when they purchase property, because it can be very confusing.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Any further comments?
Those were mine. Good job.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, um, I just would like to talk, you know, obviously, I appreciate the opportunity as this was put together, um, and especially with your help or, well, good work on this, Anita, with all of our suggestions and things, but, uh, I appreciate the opportunity when we talked about AVO, the abandoned vehicle abatement, uh, situation we here, have here in the county, and looking at opportunities where we could really try and stem that. You know, I think I passed another one today, coming up here today. So I know we have a great program that's out there removing them, uh, but we always run into that roadblock of tracking down the owners and really setting a tone that, you know, not in Lake County. It can't happen here. We've got to get a handle on this, so I appreciate that opportunity as we go forward. Um, but I do have a question on cannabis, and I just go back to implementation of our ordinance. So, uh, my vote on the ordinance, obviously, was set rules and regulations and look for a compliance opportunity for folks who want to do cannabis here in Lake County. We've had the ordinance for three years, and we know we have an abundance of folks that are growing illegally in the county. And there's really not repercussion. We talked a little bit about here. They buy the property and then move ownership if there's something going wrong with it, and then they're able to continue those illegal operations. So what I would like to ask for is, we have step one, step two violation within 12 months. If, if there's a third violation on a property or something, if there could be, uh, and I hate to use the word, but I'm going to use it, uh, moratorium on that piece of property, not the ownership. So if there are, you know, multiple violations or something, because right now, we're in a cash business, so $5,000, $1,000, if that money keeps coming in, you're going to pay those fines, or you're going to fight through those. But if there's an opportunity, because we have implemented some new technology, uh, you know, we have the satellite imagery, uh, we, we could go specifically to the property or the parcel numbers, say, listen, this one's been in violation for three years, there's no application. Now, we want a path to compliance, not trying to penalize folks that are trying to do the right thing, but the folks that are just ignoring our ordinance and moving forward with illegal operations in the county, that we come up with an opportunity where there's a moratorium for five years or 10 years on that piece of property where they can't go back and just regrow. So I know I talked about this when we were talking about the ordinance of, hey, if you've done it wrong for so many years that you don't have an opportunity to do it. We're trying to encourage the business to be done in the proper way, but also protect those folks who have gone through the process. And I think, I don't have an exact idea, but that's kind of just a throw it out there of a moratorium on those properties that are doing it illegally. And I don't know if that's in the step one, two, three, on the violations or where we could do that, but I would like to have some real teeth, uh, to help address this.
Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Uh, so this would be under the section for failure to obtain a county permit, sir? Is that what you, okay. Uh, in addition to the per-plant, um... I understand what you're saying. Certainly, the individual himself, herself, themselves could be precluded for, forever from obtaining another permit if, if that's what you wanted. As to the property, that may be possible also. I'm happy to look at that and put as many teeth in that mouth as I possibly can and add that provision.
I, I'd just like to off that up, because we are looking for that, and we know we're never going to get 100% compliance, but the repeat offenders, uh, because we do, I, I think I'll probably quote the numbers wrong, but I know when they had the last presentation, we have about 60 to 65 folks who've gone... we have about 60 to 65 folks who've gone through the process. They're doing the right thing. I know we probably have another 60 to 100 that want to do that, but we have all of these illegal grows that just seem to slip through every crack we're trying to set up here, and I think using the parcel number, because that'll never change, you know, so it can't change ownership and everything, that we really try and use the tools that we have right now. And I know we have the satellite imagery already in place, being done, and, you know, the long-term vision was that, you know, we put the teeth in there for code enforcement and protect our community and this industry, and the folks doing the right thing. So I'd appreciate if the board would entertain that. Not set on the timeframes, but we've got to do something to really let folks know, we want compliance here, and if you're not going to comply in Lake County, then you don't need to be in Lake County.
So I just have a, just to clarify that, if we have a known parcel, which we have many of these, where they're repeat offenders, changing over title, and we put something in that blocks that parcel from ever having a legal grow, we have to still continually do the illegal abatement, but it takes away their ability to sell it as a parcel that could have a legal grow on it?
So.
And that would be, that's the hurdle to have to try to overcome, because you'd be looking at potentially a taking or partial taking. But as I said, I think there may be a way to impose that type of penalty without going that far. As I said, I'll do my very best to get that as far as it possibly can, because I do understand that just naming a particular applicant at the time is not going to do it, they just have a friend, your board's seen that with, you know, one person, there are multiple ways to get past those types of issues. So I will look at it and push that as far as I possibly can without walking into a legal issue.
Okay. And, you know, I come from the premises of thinking, you know, we license alcohol establishments in Lake County, there's a thing to go through this, you know, to get your ABC license. Just because you buy a facility that can be used as a bar doesn't mean that you can go through the process and get the license to do that. You still need to meet certain requirements and other things. So coming from that preference of something that's already set in place, that's really where I come with that idea, and I know there was going to be, you know, things that came up with it, but that's really how I look at it. So instead of reinventing the wheel, like I said, you have to meet certain requirements to open that establishment up, you have to pass all the background, you have to do all those things, and it's a license that you must acquire. And so that's where I come from, and the same concept with our cannabis, there's a path to go through that properly, but, you know, it does, it is held against you, and ABC, they ask you, have you ever had a license revoked? Have you ever had this? You know, there are things that need to be answered as you move forward through that process. I know it's not an easy conversation, but I really think when we're looking to put teeth into this operation in this new industry, I just want to have that conversation some more.
Thank you for those comments.
And as I do understand, and I think that what you just mentioned is the appropriate track.
Your mic.
And as far as that can possibly be pushed, for all the reasons your board has stated.
I can't hear.
For all the reasons that your board has so far stated, I will make sure that there is something responsive to your concerns.
And just looking, I think we do have consensus, just want to check in if we have consensus on that to go ahead.
Most definitely. We need to have as much teeth as we possibly can if we have to go and put this on the property, because putting it on a person's not working, I definitely think we, you know, once you violated it two times, you could no longer apply for any, anything. We don't want you here in Lake County if you're not going to do it the proper way. We're looking for good actors.
So I do want to segue on that topic as well. I like that you just said two times, Supervisor Scott. I'm tired of playing baseball, where we have to wait for people to mess up three times. We don't, there's no specific requirement that we have to wait three times. There is a legal avenue, it's very obvious, we talk about it often. I think if you prove that you can't follow the rules two times, we don't want you to be involved in this for at least, you get a timeout.
Yeah.
And I would like it to be two times, and we can discuss it when it comes back to us to see if that's the case, but the neighbors are really upset that we're allowing this to continue and try again and try again. Eventually, we have to recognize that it is harming the community by allowing them to try again, rather than really putting a complete red flag on that property or that individual as well. I think it needs to be both. We need to track both, because eventually, they're cycling through all the people that can purchase a property. If we don't track the individuals, eventually, they're going to slip right through as well.
If I may, the one, two, three, of course, doesn't go to the failure to obtain a permit at all.
Yeah.
That's what your board was talking about last time, where if somebody had a permit but was messing up, you wanted to give them chances to correct. And certainly, I can put something comparable in the third time. When it comes to the section where you have no permit whatsoever, there is no one, two, three, it's simply your board can act and act immediately. If you want to give them more chances, I can certainly insert that, but what I understood from you was that if they have no permit, that's egregious, and you want to be able to act very quickly.
But I also think we need to be staying on top of those people that have done it legally, but once they get the permit, then it just seems like all the rules are out the window, and they're doing whatever they want, and they're upsetting the neighbors, and then that's when we get the calls. You know, it's in writing what you're supposed to be following, and one time that you violate what the ordinance says, what you've agreed to do, you know, shame on you. You do it twice, shame on us, and you're done. We really need to get harder on this.
So I'm going to confuse the conversation a little bit. I thought we were talking about people who were not licensed, because no matter how many times we go after, let's just say, a specific business, a restaurant, that doesn't follow environmental health rules, we're not going to shut down the restaurant entirely for five years, we're going to shut them down until they fix the problem, and then they can reopen back up. And I think we need to treat a business like a business. We have a use permit for cannabis, we can put it on hold and say, fix your violation, until your violation has been cleared, and then you can go ahead and continue with the business. If you mess up once, okay, you messed up once, we busted you, we have citations, we fine you. If you mess up twice and you still don't have a license, then at that point, you're prohibited from getting a license for a certain amount of time. That's the perspective that I thought that we were looking at, the one and two, because right now, the regulations, there's, there's some issues and confusion, both in the regulations, from both our county as well as the applicant. And so I want to make sure that we're not shutting down a business entirely, because when's the last time we shut down a business for having a violation? They clear the violation, and then eventually, they can continue on with their business. We also have a 10-year use permit, which is not typical for other use permits, which means that there's a way to prohibit them from continuing in the long run if there's too many issues. And I'm hopeful that in the revision of the cannabis ordinance, which I think is a great place to say, no prior violations, if you have more than two violations, then you're not eligible for a permit for a certain amount of time. I think that's a good place to put it as well, but that there's a revocation portion to the ordinance, which right now, there's not really. And I think that that's where we can do some cleanup for those that are licensed.
And whatever your board determines, the way it's written now, for those individuals who are violating the permit, there are those three chances. Those are existing businesses, and with each violation, the permit goes up, the violation goes up from 1,000 a day, 3,000 a day, 5,000 per day, per violation. And that's an existent, but obviously, that can be changed according to your direction. The failure to obtain a permit at all does not give any chances.
Right.
That's an immediate corrective action. But again, this is up to whatever direction your board gives me, I'll do my best to implement.
Well, my intention when we bring it up was the non-compliant cannabis folks that are out there right now.
No license.
No license. It's been on for three years, they haven't even came in, done an application, they're just out there growing illegal, because there are no ramifications. And my comments come specifically, I understand, you know, under, once you have your permit, yes, you have an opportunity. I'm not saying close those folks down. We worked through that process, we have that set up. What I'm talking about is, and what I brought up was for the illegal grows, it's been up for three years now, they've grown, which we know we have, folks that have grown every year without ever coming to the county or even seeking a permit. And those are the ones that I really want to be able to just, you know, have that, you know, have those consequences of, listen, there's a path for compliance, and you've proven that is not the path you're on, so we don't need it here. So that is, was my comments, coming from that point of view. I hear everybody and what we're saying. If we want to strengthen those up, I think it's a deeper conversation, but we've got to draw that line, because we're all dealing with it, ourselves in each district and our constituents. And I think we need to put that line in there and be firm on it. So those are my comments.
And so we're tracking the individuals, following on Supervisor Simon's comments, additionally, tracking those individuals and those parcel numbers for these violations? So they can't receive a permit?
Well, certainly the individuals. As to parcels, I'm going to have to look at that, because, you know, there's obviously complications. I can also say that the ordinance itself refers to unfair business practices and the fact that the county can bring those. Someone who's engaged in a cannabis business without the necessary permit is certainly engaging in an unfair business practice, because that individual or individuals are able to bypass the system that all of the cultivators who are law-abiding may not, and puts them at a disadvantage in terms of their business, which is the essence of an unfair business practice. And that is litigation that comes with it, some very, very hefty fines. The state is very liberal with regard to that, and some of those fines can be as much as $25,000 a day. That does get people's attention quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would kill me, but, you know.
So I do have a lot of notes on this. One of them starts with the definition of cannabis operations. I think that it should not include, or right now, it says, does not include personal use. I think that should be stricken. I think even personal use in certain areas is done illegally and should have those fines. I'm seeing a reaction from Ms. Grant.
Oh, only because I thought, and perhaps I'm incorrect, and if so, I apologize, I thought there was the discussion that if personal use stays within the parameters as it's defined, i.e. the six plants, that it wasn't an illegal activity. But if it's, perhaps what you're talking about then is to say, other than personal, I can cross-reference the definition to ensure, because anything else would be illegal. Personal use has certain limitations, and if one exceeds them, that is by its nature then an illegal use. So rather than omitting it, perhaps clarify it?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure what's the diff, at what point do you cross over to commercial, and what point do you, does commercial cross over into illegal? Is it when you're licensed and you're in violation, it's not illegal? It's just, I was getting a little confused, because 10,000 square feet is pretty much the minimum that we're seeing for commercials, so if you have six plants, which are allowed in certain areas, sometimes indoor, sometimes you're allowed outdoor, depending on the acre of your property, I wasn't quite sure where it slides over to the next step. And I was thinking, any, any unallowable cannabis is a nuisance, and I'd like for it to be dealt similarly. That's why I was looking to maybe look at striking it up.
I understand, sir. I'll either strike it, or if it's more clear, may I just simply clarify it?
I think clarification might help.
Okay.
So it says up to $1,000 per day, so obviously, you can do anything in between. I feel that's very, I don't feel that there's language in our policy to provide guidance to code enforcement as to, is it $555? Is it $500? Is it $200? What, and when I look at the municipal code, and I spoke with Ms. Grant yesterday and said, I'm going to make, I'm going to complicate things here, so this is me complicating things, I fear, I feel that code violations should have a severity rating. Is it a low rating, or is it a high rating? Like a high fence, that's a low rating, in my opinion. If there's plants in your backyard and they're not supposed to be there, and especially it's a vacant lot, that's a high severity rating. At that point, I think those two should get two different fines, two different levels of fines, one is 1,000, one is 100, 200, 500, whatever it is. And also, the amount of time you need, you're given to clear your violation also depends on, is it a low severity or a high severity? High severity means it's continuous, it's a nuisance to all, and it impacts the quality of life in the community or in the surrounding area, which I would say, let's make it happen as quickly as possible, what's the lowest number we can use? If we can get these plants done in seven days, where then we can now start doing the abatement, let's get it done in seven days. Right now, it says up to 30 days, and I don't know, again, not sure if that gives enough direction to code enforcement to say, what's a legitimate amount of time to do less than 30 days? And we know that with the popularity of auto flowers, 30 days is half of the lifespan of these plants, close to half, and depending on when we get to them, they may be harvested and gone by the time we get there. I'd love to look at a, what is the minimum amount of days that we can say they need to be abated by? Because it just seems like we're always going to be playing catch-up if it's, if it's 30 days, or if we don't give enough explicit direction as to what the minimum is.
The, certainly, you can include more definitive statements. The one thing I would caution you with regard to specificity, if you keep things general, then a great number of things fall under that umbrella, under a general rule. If you make things very specific, you can limit yourself. So it's going to have to be crafted carefully to avoid eliminating certain types of things altogether. Also, I will tell you that there are some government code sections that are going to impact this, so you can't just say, well, you have 24 hours on everything. There is the opportunity to be able to challenge and take issue, which is a due process right, which you have to give time for. And so that you have to have those administrative mechanisms in place to allow for all of that. It may be doable, I can certainly draft something out. There's also a provision in the ordinance that allows your board to do some of this by resolution. So I can look at the option for you of making reference to this in the ordinance, and then also providing your board with a resolution that provides the level of detail you're talking about with timeframes.
And overall, with what I bring up, my most highest priority is the minimum number of days when it comes to eradicating illegal grows. The longer we take, the more, okay, now I'm going to appeal, and there's multiple levels of appeal. And each time, we get postponed to getting the end result that we're looking for, and a lot of times, it's the abatement just keeps getting pushed back and pushed back, and then we end up losing the battle where we didn't actually make a change for the situation. And so I'm looking for that minimum number of days that we can take to eventually go get a warrant and be able to go in and abate the plant if they have not done so.
Well, and certainly, and the ordinance does make reference to summary abatement for grows without permits, in cases where there's an imminent harm, which would include growing next to any type of a water source, leaching of chemicals, unsanitary conditions, et cetera, erosion, redirecting streams, redirecting roads, creating roads. All of those things have severe and immediate detrimental environmental effects and would be subject to summary abatement. Also, again, notwithstanding the abatement process, your board does have in its arsenal for unpermitted grows, the unfair business practices action, which may take a little time, but the penalties are so severe that you oftentimes will secure a very quick level of compliance, because those penalties will track you. You don't have the ability to just say, well, I'll leave this property and go on. That judgment will track the individual. So it's a serious level, but certainly, I'll look to see in terms of what, in terms of the least amount of notice, but the notice is going to be dependent upon danger, risk, et cetera. But the notice is going to be dependent upon danger, risk, et cetera. So circumstances that you feel are going to justify a shorter notice because, because they only need a short period of time to accomplish a task, those would certainly justify a shorter period of time. So I can certainly, I can certainly do that in, in one of a couple of ways.
Page 10 of the document. And page 10 is under the heading of administrative penalties for failure to obtain and/or maintain any permit related to cannabis operations, which is required issued or approved. In page 10, it says, where does it say it? That if you're caught without a permit, you need to self-abate. Where does it say that?
Right in the middle of the paragraph.
Unfortunately, I, I'm just going to read from my notes because I can't seem to find it. But you need to self-abate or submit an application for the permit. And I, I don't like the or, because then that almost means like you don't have to self-abate. The permit right now is taking three years for some people to get approved. Those plants need to go, not self-abate or submit an application for the permit.
And if you're growing illegally, then you're not going to get a permit.
And that also somewhat contradicts what we were saying.
And, and part of this speaks to kind of the hodgepodge that this ordinance has been. This section really should, should be confined, in my recommendation, as someone who has applied for a permit, but a permit has not yet been approved and does these things. Keeping again, the fact that somebody who's growing without a permit is the most egregious of the acts that justifies the county acting immediately and unequivocally to correct, with other things being given the opportunity to correct. And I can certainly change the, that to and and make that adjustment because it should be in the process of obtaining, but has not. In other words, people who are growing too early.
And since it's under the heading of both being permitted or unpermitted, in, in my opinion, no matter what, you need to self-abate or we're going to abate it for you. You don't have a permit for it, so therefore it's absolutely illegal.
That's easy to correct.
Let me just keep going through my notes. I don't see, I, I see the, I'm sorry, I, I don't have the page number, but it says a, a structure without a permit, you're going to have to pay five times the permit fee. And I don't see that being in the fines for illegal cannabis. And is that because for an illegal structure, you will eventually get the permit for that structure? And so that's why you have to pay five times? Because I feel, not only are you not paying your permit, you're not paying your taxes. And I know that we have some fairly egregious fines, but those fines, that the way we're looking at it, are also fairly egregious for those that are permitted. How, again, are we differentiating between an illegal grow and illegal grow to really put a hammer on the illegal grows? And if they don't have to pay a fee for not trying to get a permit, where right now we do that for the structures, I'm not sure how we can add on to that.
I think, I think that there can be some general statements with regard to other violations on the property of an illegal grow. So I think that can be adjusted.
Okay. And my last one, just trying to filter through for what we've already discussed or throw out. On page 16, we list all the things that we want to see on the imposition of fines. And I, I just want to make sure it's unsaid, and maybe it is. It says the signature of the enforcement officer, but we, we need to make sure they have all the contact information.
Okay.
I, I think that that's an important factor in, in communicating. And so let's make sure that that's there. And then the, just a quick question for the hardship waiver, which is right below. Is there a reason why that one is 14 days when everything else is 15 days? Is that, just wondering if we can maybe be consistent with 15 and not just throw in a random 14?
Oh, certainly. Again, it's, it's the little bits and pieces that have been corrected over time. Certainly that can be adjusted.
Okay. Those were my only notes that I, well, thank you for listening to my mini notes.
That's good.
Supervisor, may I say it was only a third of what I expected?
I took out a lot because of the previous conversations. I, I concur with what Supervisor, Supervisor Simon said. We, we have to find a way that if you're not willing to follow the rules that we have set in place that are very available for everyone to follow, we can't just keep playing games and, and we got, we got to put people on a list.
I think I understand supervisors, and I will make sure that those areas are beefed up according to the directions you're giving today.
Yeah, I have something else.
Supervisor Crandall?
And so just, just, you know, kind of going over and reviewing some of this. You know, when it comes to community growth boundaries and people actually conducting illegal grows in those areas, I consider that egregious as well. One of the things we're working on, and this is just to kind of complement what we're talking about, and maybe we can implement it once this moves forward, is ensuring that there are signs put up in the specific areas or even online or something like that, showing where community growth boundaries are and that there's not allowed, there's no permit, there's no grows allowed in that area. Because that's what's, one of the problems we're having in a specific area is that they think that it is allowed because it's never been said not, but it has. They just don't research it or whatever the case may be. But, but there's also something I thought about in regards to that. So if someone does, let's say hypothetically, grow in that area and they egregiously do it more than once or twice or whatever the case, or be involved with that. I know that when we did the assessors training, there's a list of people that cannot purchase parcels in the county because of their past conduct. Is there something that, that we, that we have, that we can do in that? Or maybe it's been a while since we had that training, but I remember they would always say, here's a list of people. As soon as you see that, don't even look, don't even, don't even process. I don't, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I thought maybe I would bring that up.
Well, that's interesting, the list of contractors that the state posts.
Yeah, it's a little different though. It's a lot different actually, but, but I'll certainly look into that.
Microphone, please.
I'll certainly look into that. And certainly, community growth boundaries and illegal grows within those boundaries, ratchet up your board's assessment of an imminent threat of harm because community growth boundaries, there are more people to be harmed, water systems to be tainted, et cetera. All of those things would come into play for summary abatement as well. So, but there again, that type of information on informational cards and on the front desk is a perfect place just to keep those reminders out there for people. But certainly in the actual cannabis ordinance redraft, that could be made with, with repeat clarity throughout the ordinance because sometimes saying something several times is, is very effective.
And that's what, I know, I'm working with the group and we're doing that messaging. We're doing a letter to send out and we're doing some signage. And this is the perfect time, once this is moving forward, it can kind of go together. So people are like on notice as well. So, yeah, I just wanted to.
I'd like to add to that idea. If I drive through a construction, a road that's under construction, fines are doubled or whatever they are. Can we do something like that for if you're growing illegally in a community growth boundary? Or if you're illegally drafting water? Is there anything that we can add on to the fact that you are doubling the harm on the, because one activity in the middle of nowhere is not the same activity right next to a whole bunch of residences? Which is what, why we have community growth boundaries is to help protect the quality of life in those areas. Is there anything that we can do to help multiply or add on to those fines in those specific areas?
Well, sir, I think so. Because again, the constitutional prohibition is against excessive fines or fees. It does not state that you cannot charge something that is representative of the harm that you're attempting to deter people from committing. And in these kind of cases, certainly, what I can tell you is I'll certainly redraft and look at the language of the ordinance to, to make the case for you and your board. When this comes back to you, can determine if it's adequate to justify doubling the penalties in certain circumstances. Again, based upon the level of harm and the difficulty of remediating it. Because as you know, some levels of harm, you can say, well, that was bad. But the fix is almost environmentally a worse situation than the creation of the harm in the first place. So it really does tie your board's hands in terms of how to be responsive and maintain the environment for the future generations. So in that regard, I think it, it would justify.
Some communities don't have a community growth boundary.
That can be fixed.
We need to figure out how to remedy that as well.
It may be population centers, something like that.
Which includes community growth boundaries.
Does the language adjust exactly?
Well, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate us having this in front of us so that we can move this forward. And if there's no further comment, I will open it up for the public. All right. And please raise your hand if you wish to speak on the Zoom room or please approach the microphone if you wish to speak on this item in the boardroom. Okay. And seeing none, I think you've gotten the direction that you were looking for. I don't think we can move forward with a second reading with all those changes. So we will see the first reading of the ordinance again.
This does have to be at a regular meeting of your board, not a special meeting? So that will be?
I would suspect September, was that 10th? No, that doesn't make sense.
The first meeting in September is, let's see.
14th.
It's not up there, it's the 14th.
14.
Oh, certainly by then, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, there's no other regular meeting.
Do we need to make a, a motion to continue this at that certain time?
No, you can just tell me to make sure it's back to you in a timely manner and no later than September 14.
Please.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, staff has called to my attention a couple of glitches we're having today with Granicus. First of all, we're told that the feed has been in and out part of today. It's back on now, but there have been times it's off. And so with that in mind, I asked Matthew to post on the Zoom screen the YouTube location where if, if a viewer has had a temporary glitch in what they were viewing, they could go watch it in entirety at that YouTube location that's posted right there on the screen. And then secondly, if you look at your paper agenda, if you happen to have a paper version, there is no item 5.3 printed on it. But if you look at your agenda software, it is there. And, and then also if you look at the Granicus website electronic version, it is not there. So 5.3, the elusive 5.3 is an item brought forward by the Ag Department. And so I'm recommending that you reopen your, your consent agenda to clarify that you were not approving 5.3 because you just approved the whole row of numbers. And so it would be implied that there was a 5.3. And we've confirmed with Ag that that department can be carried, that item can be carried over to next week since there was some glitch in posting it.
Okay. I appreciate that. I had caught that, but I had forgotten to bring it up in, in the meeting today. So I appreciate staff bringing it to our attention. So what we need to do is negate the vote on the consent agenda and then re-vote with just 5.1 to 5.2 and 5.4 to 518.
Correct.
I think it's 518. And so if we can get that motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to reopen the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now looking for a new motion to approve the correct numbers that are on the agenda.
Do we need to open it all the way up and ask for public comment or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and, any public comment? Thank you for that. Any public comment on, any public wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 5.3, so item 5.1 through 5.2, and then 5.3, 4 through 5.18.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you again to staff for bringing that to our attention.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to request this, but staff are telling me there may be another glitch of this nature. I'm just getting notified. Could we take a five-minute break so I can go confirm with staff and find out?
So it is 11:48, let's restart at 11:55.
Thank you.
Check, check. Oh, now we're here. Supervisor Scott, give us a thumbs up if you can hear us. All right, we're back and you can see us as well. Sorry for the time needed to be able to fix our technical difficulties, but it looks like we can go ahead and continue. And in continuing, we are going to back up one more time and redo our consent agenda. It seems that both 5.2 and 5.3 somehow got interchanged and convoluted within all of our systems. And so we're going to go ahead and go back and reopen our consent agenda and push those two items to a future agenda in order to make sure that they are fixed and correct, both for the public and for the board of supervisors.
Mr. Chair, just one quick second, I want to check in with.
If we can get your microphone on, please?
It is on.
Oh.
I want to check in with the Assistant Clerk of the Board to make sure she's able to hear us. Johanna?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you for that. And looking for action to start.
Mr. Chair, I move to reopen the consent agenda column.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Microphone?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then looking for approval of the agenda minus 5.2 and 5.3.
Need to open it up for public comment?
Oh, sorry, yep, thank you very much. Anybody from the public wish to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to pull items 5.2 and 5.3 from the agenda for a later date. And I move to approve item 5.1 and 5.4 through 5.18 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Apologize for that confusion, but thank you again to staff for catching those things. I believe the only item we have left is 7.1, Supervisor's Weekly Calendar, Travel and Reports. And let's go backwards and start with Supervisor Pisca.
So I have a couple of things to report on. Supervisor Simon mentioned earlier about the progress the Risk Reduction Authority is making. A few weeks ago, I, last month, we started meeting Tammy, Alexei, our, our North Coast Operations Coordinator of the Risk Reduction Authority, started pulling together a few people to talk about grant opportunities and what the best fit is. And I think there was four of us on that first call. And I happened, I, I had a tight schedule on Friday, but I tuned in late to that meeting, which has been happening weekly. And I think there were 13 people on that call. And now there's a really big spreadsheet, all the grants that are available, people working together, figuring out who's the best fit, who should apply, how, how can we support everybody else, get letters of recommendation? everybody else, get letters of recommendation. All of those things are happening right now. So I just wanted to share this great synergistic group that we have right now. And it's all because we finally have the capacity with the Risk Reduction Authority. So I think you're going to see a lot of action, a lot of movement, a lot of grant opportunities. This really is just the beginning of what Supervisor Simon and I have been working on for quite a long time. So I'm really excited about that. And hopefully more people will be joining us each week as we look at those opportunities and figure out where those best fits are. Everybody knows by now, we have a PSPS scheduled for later today. And just encourage everybody to be ready for that. We have fire weather coming in. So we have our firesafelake.org website has all of the resources that we've pulled together over the years about, you know, preparing your family or home for a fire season. I encourage everybody to start sharing that website, get that out. Let everybody, you know, know that we have this wonderful resource that we've been, it's been years in the making. We finally have it and it's specifically for Lake County, but it works really for anybody in fire country. So do what you can to prepare today and for the next couple of months. It's going to be, it's going to be a dicey couple of months. I'm starting to see a lot of businesses take proactive steps to manage with COVID-19 in our community. And I really, you know, I encourage businesses to do this. Do what it takes to protect yourself, protect your staff. You know, I know that you can't lose, the businesses can't lose any more productivity, any more closed days, downtime. So I ask that the public, when you're, when a business asks you to put a mask on, please do it. Respect their wishes. Respect what they need to do to keep their doors open. That's what I've got. I think Supervisor Simon will report more about our Risk Reduction meeting yesterday, but that's what I've got right now. Got a couple of things. So later today, it looks like I have a committee meeting after this. Tomorrow night, Senator McGuire is having a COVID Town Hall, which we can all tune into virtually. I hope everyone will do that. It should be live on Facebook. And for whatever reason, I have some light days, so I'm going to be catching up on a lot of things. I have a Cockberry Council meeting tomorrow night. There's also a Kelseyville Street Dance tomorrow night, but I won't be able to make that because I will be at the Cockberry Council meeting. I'm meeting with my new Planning Commissioner Friday afternoon. Saturday, there's a dinner at Peace and Plenty Farm I'm really looking forward to. And Monday, I'll be having meeting with our CAO and some dental appointments in the afternoon. Are you sure? My feelings on that. That's it.
Just a reminder Supervisor that we're working on scheduling that comprehensive drought meeting with department heads on Friday morning at approximately 8:30, 8:45.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you very much for your report. And Supervisor Scott?
Yes, today I have an appointment at 3 o'clock with my children and then attending the city council meeting at 6 via Zoom. Tomorrow Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee at 3 o'clock. There's a Chamber Mixer via Zoom at 5:30 that I'm hoping to attend. On Thursday, there's the Executive Committee of the COC meeting at 9 o'clock in the morning via Zoom. And then Behavioral Health is having their Mental Health Board meeting from 3 to 5 on the 19th via Zoom. On Friday, we're hoping to go down to Lower Lake for the first scrimmage for football. And then on Monday, the Scotts Valley Community Meeting, that's also via Zoom. That's all for me.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, thank you. First, I'll report on the Community Vision Forum Planning Committee that we had last week. It was a pretty decent meeting and we got, we got some things nailed down. First off, I think yesterday the RFQ closed for, looking for the subcommittee's efforts, or the subcommittee put together efforts to identify facilitator. And so that closed yesterday. So I'm pretty sure we'll be looking towards that in the near future. And we really nailed down the revised Community Vision Forum Planning Commission, Committees, Commission, guidelines and purpose statement. So it really did, it was really effective. And everyone seemed to be hitting on the same, you know, the same, I don't even know, you know, we're all in the same cylinders. That's what it is. Yeah. Anyhow, so today, pretty sure if we can get finished, we'll do a gender review. Tomorrow, RCRC at 9:00 AM. I know I have a Cannabis Tax Ad Hoc Committee, 3 to 4, Wirth at 5:30. Thursday, Animal Control Director meeting, I think it's at 8:30. And then Friday, I have the Lacerne Area Town Hall. And then Monday, CAO meeting and back here Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so I'm going to go through my calendar and then go through the reports. So BOS meeting today and finishing up. And do have this afternoon a committee meeting with Supervisor Pisca and also Community Development. So finish that up today. Tomorrow, have Code Enforcement, Ava meeting tomorrow at 1:00, 1:00 PM. It had to be rescheduled, so I'm glad we got that back on and got that out there. So we're going to be moving forward with that. So really encouraged about some of the citations and other stuff coming back in September so we can really address some issues that we have throughout the county. So on Thursday, I have a committee meeting in the morning. And then in the afternoon, I have the State Board of Fire Services. There is also the ESJPA meeting. I know I am the, on that, but I know that ours attends that. So we're doing, letting that happen. And then in the evening, I have, I'm on the schedule to meet with the Central Park Association in Middletown to talk to them about their dormitory and future opportunities for Risk Reduction Authority. Friday, have the Drought EOC. And then potentially going to try and make that the grant opportunities meeting that's been set up with Tammy through Risk Reduction Authority. The Lower Lake Action Committee Group is having a fundraiser at the local park down in Lower Lake on Saturday. I think it starts at 11. I might have the time wrong, but I know they're looking to do some fundraising down there. Tickets I think are still available for their barbecue. So be attending that. And then back here on Monday for a meeting with Carol. And Tuesday, the board meeting. To just follow up on a couple of things, obviously, reporting, obviously, we had the, I can't think the name of it anyway, the fire in Hidden Valley. I just want to thank all of our local fire departments and also our surrounding counties. The response was very quick. You know, they got on it, you know, ultimately with our air support that we currently have now upon Cobb with the new Blackhawk. But just the immediate response, I just want to thank everybody for that. I know that our local Lake County Fire Chief Willie Cepeda, Chief Wayne Duncan, I'm probably missing some names, but everybody responded, did an excellent job on what needs to be done. And I know we are always doing this. I think it was also too, an activation too in the South County. I think first time with Zone Haven, I was thrown into place by the Sheriff's Department. So appreciate on educating yourself as a community member, understanding and evacuating, you know, early on so we can help address those issues as they, you know, the first responders are out there. And the other thing I want to say, because we're constantly doing this, but now with the Vegetation Abatement Ordinance and everything we're doing, our community, our individual homeowners are really doing things in a better manner. Witnessed on Calistoga Road there, where it burned right up to the residences, but homes were able to be saved because they had the proper setbacks, the grass cutting and everything. And I just want to commend our, you know, homeowners, our individuals in the community for just helping that out. Defensible space is something that we all need to just look at a different light right now. You know, we have the largest fire reverberating, we have the Dixie Fire, we're early in this season. So I just want to commend our community and our constituents for really buying into what we need to do to give our first responders a fighting chance to save structures and to, you know, really limit the damage. So there's always challenges that goes along with it, but we're always thinking the first responders. But I just want to put it out there that our constituents are buying into this and witnessing, you know, that is just, it's phenomenal. It gives a great opportunity. They can move on and look to put something, stop something instead of just looking at structure, you know, protection structures. So anyway, I just want to say thank you to everybody and the surrounding counties. Because I saw Willows, Colusa, Calistoga, some other names I didn't even recognize, but just seeing that immediate responses is actually especially what they've been through so far, as I said, with the Dixie Fire. The Risk Reduction Authority meeting, you know, the collaboration is growing. When we started this two and a half years ago, there's a lot of vision and conversation that went into it, but collaboration is really coming together. Really appreciated everybody pushing hard to get the CMAT process put together. And I know Michelle Scully, everybody who's been coming to the meetings, adding Jessica on as the board and EJ throughout those conversations to get that here. I just want to say that I really do see us taking those steps in the right direction. Some of that stuff we did today with the NCO Support Letter. But in the next couple of years, with the updating of the CWPP and everything that's being talked about, we're going to see on the ground projects that are happening. And it's going to be the next decade, we're dealing with climate change, we're dealing with so many things that are changing right now that this is the time to act. And I know you always want it to be sooner than later. We were a little bit reactive, but now I think we're moving into the proactive stage where we should have been a while ago, but we're there now. We look forward and we learn from our history, try not to repeat it. And I think we're moving in that direction. So greatly appreciate everybody's support, all the nonprofits, the agencies, the fire wise communities, and just the guy out there cutting the grass and trying to do what they can. So greatly appreciated. Basically, that's what I have today. So I do want to follow up one thing too. The PSPS event is changing. It changed since we've been here on the board. We'll try and get as much information. But this really is a PG&E controlled incident. I hope they have reached out to the communities. We'll continue to push on that and make sure that they do get that information out there. I do hope that the micro grids and some of the other things that have been set up over the last year, they have done a lot of work that they're implemented. So we'll continue to communicate with them, try and make this as least painful as possible with the resource centers being set up. But please try and educate yourself and be prepared. This won't be the last time it happens this year. So we'll continue with those communications and try and push as hard as we can for our constituents throughout these issues. So that's it.
Thank you very much. For my report, last Wednesday, I don't know how many if all were invited to go to a White House meeting for the infrastructure plan that had passed at the Senate level. I know it still needs to go through the House and there's some potential changes that will occur there. But we, in my opinion, we have an opportunity. The conversation goes to airports, to roads, to bridges, to water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure. I think we have lots of those opportunities right here. And so I look forward to furthering that conversation and bringing that conversation to the board. I think we just need to be as best positioned to receive as many of those dollars as we can. That was last week. Then I also wanted to just, real quick, not to go into the gritty, nitty gritty details, but I'm excited about the conversation at the Roadmap Task Force. I know just recently I met with Sheriff Martin, who had said that what we're discussing and what we're planning on doing with the Roadmap Task Force and the enhanced enforcement on a focused community. He just saw a presentation somewhere in the East Coast that was basically almost a carbon copy of what we're looking to do. And they're showing the successes that they've had. And I hope that we can lead to those same type of successes. So it's exciting to know that we're aiming in the right direction. And I hope our delivery is on point when we bring it to the board and bring it to the community. Let's see, tomorrow, an important topic is the IFTs, which is Inter Facility Transfers. This has been an issue for our hospitals to transfer patients on a regular basis, let alone during a surge, during a COVID surge. We need more ambulances in the area to safely transfer patients from one to another. I'm sure many have noticed the large number of helicopters moving from hospitals to move patients from our hospitals. And that is not the way that we should be fixing that. We need to make sure and fix the IFT issue. So that will be a conversation I'm involved in tomorrow morning. We'll have our agenda review. I was confused at first about the County of Lake Code Enforcement meeting, but that would be AVA. We missed our AVA last maybe three weeks ago, I think at the beginning of the month. And so we will be doing our AVA meeting at 1:00 PM on Wednesday to discuss the abandoned vehicle. I believe that everything's going smoothly there. We are continuously receiving money from the state and we don't seem to have a problem to spend that money as we're getting a lot of vehicles. If you have vehicles that you've seen laying around for a while, just make sure you connect with code enforcement. I know that from listening to Supervisor Crandall, his preference is to submit that online as he feels he gets the best bang for his buck going through that direction. So please make sure to submit that information and we will do our best to get to it as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, the funds do deplete, but we can find ways to get those vehicles where they belong. Then if I'm lucky and that meeting doesn't last too long, I'll be able to join the Marketing Committee over in the City of Clear Lake where I continue to work on enhancing some of the art projects that we're working on in that area. On Thursday, it looks like I have a CSAC call, which is only on Thursdays now for the COVID update from the state. And we'll be at the City Council for the City of Clear Lake. Start off Friday with the Drought EOC meeting and then the Comprehensive Drought Planning, which I just received an invitation to right there. On the following week, at this moment, all I have is just meeting with our CAO, but I'm sure some of that will fill up. So that's all I have for today. I believe we've depleted the entire public agenda. And as far as the closed session, we will be tabling 8.1. 8.1 was Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B, Appointment of Community Development Director. We will table that for this week and hopefully that will come back to us on a following day. And with that, unless I missed anything, our meeting is adjourned and thank you very much for joining us.